Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to Pompano Beach City Commission Chambers for this informative afternoon about the sewage spill that took place. I am Rex Harden, Pompano Beach Mayor, and with me today, I'd like to introduce my colleagues. We've got City Commissioner Tom McMahon, who is here, and we also have City Commissioner Andrea McGee, who is here also. We're going to have an open discussion, questions, answers, after some presentations. And if I could ask everyone from the public, this is being recorded. This is being recorded as a public meeting, and it's also being livestreamed so people can watch it on the Internet at home on their TVs if they want to. If I can ask everybody who wants to come forward to ask any kind of a question, you can't do it from out there. You have to come forward to this podium right here and please speak into the microphone and give your name and address for the record. That way, we've got it and everybody can see it because this is a noticed public meeting. This is open to everything. Commissioner Roddy Eaton just walked in the back there also. I'd like to recognize her. So, your questions are important. This sewage spill, it's impacted our community. We're going to stay with it until we get everything solved. It's an important topic, of course, for the entire city and for any individuals who are here, of course, it's of paramount importance. And so, we are here to try and help with this process. And we've got experts with us today. They'll be giving a presentation. And I'm going to now turn it over to our Utilities Director, Randy Brown, who will continue with the introductions. And once we finish with the presentations, then it will be opened up for the public comments, questions, like I said, but please, everyone, be sure and come forward to this podium. There's a television camera right up there that will be recording you, give you name and address for the record. All right? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Dr. Anthony Janicki from Janicki Environmental. Mr. Janicki was brought in to look after the -- look at the city side of things and to protect the residents in the city through this process as we go through the mitigation and remediation of the spill that was caused by the DOT contractors. So, Mr. Janicki?
Thanks, Randy. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. Well, some of you, I think, may have been here last night, and actually, I got some new data in last night, so I updated what we have, went through all the appropriate QAQC before doing so. So, there's going to be a few new things that you're going to see, at least one slide from last night. As you all know, there was an event that happened on January 4th, which a 42-inch forest main was breached, and there was a release of sewage into the C-1 canal at that time. Of course, the C-1 canal eventually connects to the Pompano Canal through that gate at G-57. Immediately, there were attempts to repair the pipe, and it took several days, including finally getting to a situation where a bypass pipe was included to stop the discharge. And eventually, the discharge was ceased on January 10th. So, while that has ceased, there's still concern about the potential effects and the real effects of that spill on water quality and other aspects of the quality of the canals that received that water. So, that's what I'm going to talk about today. One of the things that we found early on was there had been an earlier estimation of the amount of water that was actually sewage that was actually discharged, and that was somewhere in the range of 40 million gallons. After doing some final checks on some of the data, we found that the actual estimated volume of wastewater that was discharged was on the order of 52, 53 million gallons. The city of Pompano Beach began a monitoring program required by Broward County, and there are very specific aspects of the sampling that's to be done in the case of the spill. Those specifics depend upon the size of the spill and the location of the spill. So, the city of Pompano Beach began sampling on January 8th. Initially, it had five stations, and it eventually expanded up to 16 stations in the C-1 and Pompano canals. The parameters that they looked at included fecal coliform, temperature, pH, and total chlorine. I'm not sure why total chlorine was, because this was before it got to the wastewater plant, but it was also looked at. Fecal coliform is a bacterial indicator. It is an indicator of organic waste, and it's not just human waste that gets evaluated or gets measured when looking at fecal coliform. Other animal waste, you know, that may be coming off, you know, because of, you know, pets and those kinds of things, as well as birds, et cetera. Makes it very difficult to interpret that information, but when you get elevated numbers, you know you've got a situation. But, so that's what was conducted on a daily basis at those stations. And on February 8th, the trigger value, the value that used by Broward County, which borrowed from the old state water quality standard of eight coliform fecal units. So, 800, once those, all the samples in the system were below 800, there was a clearance by DEP in Broward County that sampling did not need to continue. You know, and I know the mayor said that we'll take questions at the end. If there's something really, really important that you want to ask, you know, in the meantime, you know, jot it down if you possibly can so you don't forget. So, what I'm going to show you is a series of slides that shows the area of the spill and the area that the sampling was conducted in the C-1 canal and the Pompano canal in particular. In interpreting and understanding the impact of that spill, it's important to note two different things also. One is rainfall, because with rainfall, like is happening today, the runoff from most urban watersheds are going to deliver things like fecal coliform and nutrients from the watershed. So, it's an important consideration to understand when we're trying to balance our understanding of the effect of the spill versus the normal issues with runoff and pollution coming from the watershed. So, knowing about what the rainfall was today and yesterday is really important in interpreting this information. The other thing that's important, especially for those that you live below the G-57 gate, is that that gate is not always open, and it is operated by the South Florida Water Management District primarily to ameliorate any effects of flooding. So, that's an important consideration too, because it's through that gate that any of the pollutants that entered C-1 canal with a spill would get downstream. So, January 4th, the spill occurred. It breached a 42-inch forest main, and four million gallons of sewage was dumped into that C-1 canal on January 4th. On January 8th, the volume of sewage being discharged actually went up to nine million gallons. But again, interesting is to recognize is that while there had been a delivery of sewage, you know, from the C-1 canal to the gate, the gate was actually open. And so, that allowed any of the pollutants that entered as a function of the spill to go through the gate and enter into the Pompano Canal. So, on the 9th, sampling began, and as I mentioned, there were five sampling sites that the city operated in early on in the process. And let me show you where they are. There was a site exactly at the point of the spill. There's one down here. I think this is Atlantic Avenue. And then, the sample was taken actually just downstream of the gate. There were two other samples taken in these further downstream and off to the side. Now, what you see here is there's three colors, and what we're looking at here are the fecal coliform data that were being monitored. The red are those sites that had at least 10,000 units. The yellow, you know, is not unlike, you know, the proverbial traffic signal. Green is good, yellow's kind of in between, and red's not good. Well, that's in essence what we're looking at here. So, to give you an idea about the magnitude, on the next day, you can actually see that there -- and this is not unusual, and I think that when we look at the effects of this spill, we need to understand the natural variability that happens even when you put a pollutant in, because there are things that wind, rain, meteorological conditions, and the physics of how the canal works is really, really important to understand. It's important to understand the volume of the canals, understand whether that gate is open or closed. You need to have all that information in order to make a reasonable assumption or conclusions, I should say, about the effects. So, it's not too surprising that you're going to see, even from one day to the next, you're going to see some changes. That's, it happens, as they say. So, the gate was closed on January 10th. Sometime during the day, the Water Management District closed that gate. So, on the 11th, again, it was closed, but we still see that there were four sampling sites, again, including the spill site, and three others further downstream, including, you know, two of those sites below the gate. Now, the gate's closed, so in some respects, the horse got out of the barn, you know, during those previous days. So, and then again, we see some effects further downstream, but not nearly the same level of fecal coliform as we see further upstream, closer to the actual spill site. Same thing in the 12th. On the 13th, there were more sampling stations downstream of the gate that were occupied, and the preponderance of them had fewer than 800 units. Remember, that was that target number, that's the magic number that we're looking at. So, those green dots that you see, and I'm not sure if you can see them very well. Yeah, that's not too bad. Those are the sites in which the fecal coliform were less than at 800 units. The 14th, we see very similar. Interestingly, you can see that site just below the gate, it's actually has, was started to improve in terms of quality, which is a good site, a good sign. Similarly, on the 15th, on the 16th, and on the 17th, additional sampling sites were put in the C-1 canal, because at that time, the only data being collected were red at the location of the spill itself. Now, we have a better, clearer understanding and real data for what was happening in that C-1 canal, which is an important consideration when assessing, you know, the effects of that spill. So, on January 18th, this was interesting too, because as you'll see, the two sites furthest upstream on C-1 canal actually showed improvement with respect to fecal coliform. The sites that were added the previous day still see relatively high values, and, you know, the fact that there is yellow may, again, just be due to the natural variability, but may be indicative that things may be clearing up a bit. On the 19th, similar. On the 20th, even further downstream of the spill, we saw reductions in the amount of fecal coliform measured in the water column. On the January 21st, even better. 22nd, 23rd, 24th. And at the site, just upstream of the site, you can see that we're fewer than 800 units that were measured at that time. 25th, 26th, 27th. And as we move along, there tended to be fairly good improvement, at least with respect to the amount of fecal coliform being measured in the water column at each of these sites. And there was some, for example, on this day, we had over an inch of rain, and you can see that with that inch of rain, that the discharge going through the gate 57 was one of the highest that we saw during the period of monitoring. And February 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, everyone is less than 800. The 6th, the 7th, and we talked about at the 8th. Now, there's something to consider when doing this kind of work. It's important that you, first thing, you've got to make sure that where and how you collect samples is exceptionally important, because real simple mistakes can be made in how you collect the sample, how it gets delivered to the laboratory, how it's measured, whatever is being measured in the laboratory. A number of these things, there are multiple ways in which a laboratory can measure things. So, one of the things that I have to do when I look at these things, especially when they're coming from different laboratories, is to have an understanding as, you know, are the differences that we see real, or are they simply due to the fact that laboratories are using different yardsticks, if you will? So, that's really important. And understanding too, you know, how the samples were collected, these bacterial indicators that we're looking at, including fecal coliform, have a very short holding time, as they say. The holding time refers to the amount of time from the time of sample collection to getting a result in the laboratory. And routinely, for these fecal indicators, that's on the order of 24 hours. So, if you collect a sample at noon on Monday, the laboratory has to have that analysis done by noon on Tuesday. If they don't, they will indicate in their database whether or not they exceeded that holding time, and a quality assurance check gets put into the database. And that's one of the things, again, that in evaluating the data, you need to go back and evaluate, was there a problem in meeting the holding time? You know, one of the other issues that you run into is the actual minimum detection limit that a laboratory can report. So, some systems, you know, as an example, their minimum detection limit may be 100, and I've run into situations like dealing with things like total phosphorus where maybe that lab is delivering a 250. Well, it's very difficult to make a comparison between those two data sets, because they have different, besides different perhaps methodologies, they have different detection limits, which is really important to understanding that. And when we deal with these fecal indicators, these bacterial indicators, that's really, really important that we understand that. So, Broward County also joined in, and on January 10th, they began collecting samples on a daily basis until January 16th. Initially, there were five stations and it expanded to 10. I'm going to show you the five that were collected every day when they were out there. And in addition to the fecal coliform, they also measured turbidity, which is a function of the stuff that's suspended in the water column. But they looked at two other bacterial indicators, E. coli and enterococci. The reason why they did that is because EPA and the State Department of Environmental Protection have basically abandoned fecal coliform as the appropriate indicator of bacterial problems. They've gone to E. coli and enterococci. E. coli primarily in waters that are considered fresh, and of course, all those waters above Gate 57, G-57, those are all freshwater. Below G-57, because of tidal exchange and tidal influences, salinity and conductivity are increased, and typical, not typically, and what's required to evaluate the enterococci, bacterial indicators in saltwater is to look at enterococci. So, those are the two additional bacterial indicators that were included in the sampling, again, because that's where state water quality standards come into play. So, I'm going to show you, again, there's five stations. This is the one that's furthest downstream down here in this black box one. And these are the results for enterococci in particular on the six days of sampling. And what obviously gets you right off the get-go is the fact that you can see early in the period of sampling, that which was closest to the occurrence of the event of the spill, we saw the highest values of enterococci. And you actually saw improvement over time at that site in particular. We saw--
Can I just--
You can just speak to the--
Yeah.
It's on the record. Just name it out to the record also.
Okay. Melanie Webster--
Garden Isle.
Garden Isle, sorry. 288 Southeast Third Terrace. Hi. So, just to clarify, you just mentioned that enterocaki, or however you say that, is used for saltwater, and the E. coli is fresh. Where you're indicating-- Oh, I apologize. So, those are the same sites for enterocaki, and so you just do not test for the E. coli because it's rakish water?
There's no standard.
Okay.
Sorry. Thanks.
Okay. Similar to what we saw at Station 1, the next station further upstream, off into one of the finger canals, if you will, you see the same sort of thing. Early on in that six-day period, we saw high enterococci. I'm trying to remember what the standard is. Ah, and I shouldn't, I mean, I should have this to memory. The standard as I, for the enterococci is 30, I'm pretty sure.
130.
130. I knew it was a 3 in there someplace. Thank you. And so, you know, what we saw was, you know, clearly values that were in excess of the standards and improvement over time at that site. Station 3, we saw a very similar situation. Early on, high values, in fact, some very high values, and improvement over time. And that was at Station 4, and at Station 5 was where we actually saw the highest enterococci in that period of time that Broward County was collecting samples. But then again, over time, there were improvements in those numbers, and to the point where the water quality standard for enterococci was being achieved. Then, we were asked to come in to help the city of Pompano Beach in dealing with this situation. And one of the first things that we did, we gathered up all the information that had been collected to date, and we were going through it to make sure of the quality of the information, understanding whatever issues there may be with the quality. But then, we, and when we were first called on board, I didn't have the Broward County information, and so I made a recommendation that we include enterococci and E. coli in the sampling that Pompano Beach was going to begin with, which began on February 11th. So, on February 11th, samples were taken on a weekly basis so far, and in addition to the bacterial indicators that have been looked at, I also suggested looking at the nutrients. And you're well aware of the issues that have occurred on the east coast of Florida the last 15 years, it seems, with blue-green algae blooms. Those are driven by excessive delivery of nutrients into a water body. So, one of the things that is associated with sewage is not only the bacteria, but there's also relatively high nutrient concentrations in that. And the delivery of that material can increase the nutrient concentrations in a water body pretty significantly. We deal with this thing throughout the state, so I recommend very clearly that you have an understanding about nutrients, and the response variable that you typically see in water bodies is chlorophyll. That's the amount of phytoplankton, the amount of algae that you see. So, recognizing that the State Department of Environmental Protection on a routine basis does an assessment of all the water bodies in the state with respect to nutrient and chlorophyll concentration. So, we wanted to make sure, understand where we were here in these situations relative to those state water quality standards that have been established fairly recently. So, there were additional sample analytes that were brought into play. So, these are the sampling sites, and that we began with. The blue are those that are where we had both chemistry and bacteria, and in this case, the bacteria that we're looking at, bacterial indicator, you know, was enterococci, and the freshwater sites further upstream. So, they went out on February 11th, and they went out the following week on February 19th, and we were able to get data from those two site visits. And what we're looking at here specifically with respect to E. coli. They went ahead and they did the E. coli down into marine water as well. You know, sometimes it's just easier for the lab to run through the samples. But what you can see here are a couple of different things. First is, in some sites, we see quite a bit of variability just in a matter of a few days. You know, for example, at this one site here in particular, went from over 300 to less than 100 in a matter of, what was it, eight days? But there are also sites that gave us exactly the same number on those two days. So, again, it's a function of how sites-specific this information really is, because it's a function of, you know, in a situation like these canal systems, like where are you in a canal system? Are you up near the head, or are you near the mouth? You know, how big is that canal in terms of volume? Where is it relative to tidal influences? You know, all those things are really important in determining how a system like that is going to respond to an event like that wastewater spill. So, that was E. coli. The enterococci, this was one that really made me scratch my head. When we, the first numbers we got for enterococci, you can see that in a number of sites, we had very high counts, in excess of 2,400. And others, those same sites, eight days later, we saw values that were less than 50. And again, now, you know, again, I was scratching my head, trying to figure out, how can I best explain this? Well, I can't explain it to you right now, but we're doing things to try to understand why that may happen. One of the things that occurred Monday of this week, one of the things that we asked to be done, is a split sample analysis, so that two of the laboratories will get the same water, if you will, and provide their analytical techniques. So, can we see, are some of these differences perhaps due to the actual measurement system itself? So, data were collected again on Monday of this week, and we're crossing our fingers that we're going to see 41 again at that one station and not something greater than 2,000, but we'll have to wait and see. Now, as I said, this is the new slide since yesterday. Actually, they had conducted, again, as you recall, fecal coliform has a very short holding time. So, we were able to get those numbers, and we've gone through some initial QAQC. We still may change some of these numbers, but the important thing that we saw was that with respect to fecal coliform, with the exception of one station, situation was fairly good. And that one station is here. And that is a station that actually receives discharge from the C-14 canal. And the C-14 canal is currently deemed impaired because of fecal coliform pollution, and it's going through a process called a Basin Management Action Plan. Basically, what that is, is a plan to ameliorate, to reduce the fecal coliform in the C-14 canal. Now, the city of Pompano Beach, together with five other cities, have begun the process of that cleanup. Importantly, you know, having an inter-local agreement, so everybody understands who's, you know, being brought to the table, who's got what responsibility for what, how much is it going to cost, when is it going to occur? Those are the kind of things that DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, and EPA look to in a Basin Management Action Plan. They want to see, what is your plan to get water quality within state water quality standards? So, the problem with C-14 has been known for a while. It's being addressed, and as I sit here right now, or stand here right now, I guess I should say, I'm fairly confident that those high numbers that we're seeing at that station in particular may very well have been being delivered from C-14. But more and more, we're going to be collecting other data to make sure that, you know, that's a reasonable conclusion. confident that those high numbers that we're seeing at that station in particular may very well have been being delivered from C-14. But more and more, we're going to be collecting other data to make sure that, you know, that's a reasonable conclusion. Now, since enterococci, only relatively recently was, has been used to establish bacterial pollution, if you will, an indicator. And so when we see these numbers, it's, you know, I had a lot of questions, well, what would you normally see in a situation, you know, like these canals? Unfortunately, we couldn't find any additional enterococci data from, you know, prior to the event, to have a point of comparison. But we got into South Florida's Water Management District database and the DEP Impaired Waters database up in Tallahassee. And we were looking for what water bodies in the vicinity of Pompano Beach might we have some enterococci data? And we found there are a few. They're all down in Miami Dade, unfortunately, but it's fairly close. It's not like we're looking at Tallahassee. But the important thing to hear, as you can see, is we're talking, there are a number of sites that were sampled and the data were reported. The number of samples is there. It's a fairly large number of samples. So that's another thing that I didn't mention in terms of evaluating the data. One of the biggest mistakes that get made, and I've seen made, and I've made this same mistake too many times, probably, and that is to be overreactive to an initial sample or two samples. And you're looking at these numbers, so like when I saw that less, that greater than 2,400, you know, I didn't feel real good about it. But the important thing is to have an adequate amount of data, both spatially and temporally, so that you have a better understanding as to what's really happening. What's the story behind this whole thing? And so one of the things, there were actually a host of other sampling sites in South Florida that had enterococci data, but it was only one or two samples. And I'm not comfortable making that kind of a comparison. So these numbers have a fair degree of confidence in, you know, given the number of samples that were taken. And so the next three columns, the fifth percentile, the median, the number that's in the middle, and the 95th, which is the high. So that, low, medium to high values at each of the stations. And what you see really quickly is that it varies a lot from site to site. That was one of the other things I was talking about before. Most of these things that we see are very, very site-specific. Where is the water coming from that reaches that water body that may be delivering enterococci? That's the important thing to bring into play and recognizing that there isn't going to be a number that's like normal, if you will. There are water quality standards that you need to meet, but there's going to be a lot of variability from space to space, from water body to water body, in enterococci. So we have this kind of as a point of comparison. So there is a remediation plan that has been put together by a firm, APTIM, and, you know, I apologize if it's called Aptim or whatever, but anyways, they put together a restoration plan prepared for one of the parties associated with the event. This remediation plan was developed in response to a letter from Broward County to find out what, okay, what are you guys going to do, basically? And several things that were called for in the remediation plan. One of the things was the installment of aerators in the canal system. There were 173 aerators, I think, that were installed in the canal system following this spill. And I think they eventually came out on February 11th or something like that. So that was one important part of the immediate response to the spill itself. There are other things that are in the remediation plan, and you'll have a chance to review it yourselves. One of the things that, and this is one of the, one aspect that I'm not talking about today, and that is the bottom, that's the sediments in these canals. We're talking about all the overlying water column and the quality of that medium, if you will. But the effect of that spill also had potentially very significant effects on the bottom conditions in these canal systems. So recognizing this in the remediation plan, there was a recognition of that being the case. And there's some initial sampling that I understand is going on, where they are collecting information on the quality of those sediments in the canal system. One of the things that is, and I do, back to my days in graduate school, too many, too many years ago, I've done, I've done work on lake bottoms, estering bottoms, river bottoms. And one of the things that's invariably true is that they're very, very, very spatially diverse. So I could, I could take a, and they're taking cores and they're putting it in, you know, collecting the sediment and analyzing the sediment. I'll talk about that in a second. But, you know, I could take a sample here, and I could go over to Commissioner here and take another sample, and it'd be like night and day, you know, totally different. So in order to come up with, and the reason why they're doing this is they're trying to estimate the amount of material, you know what the material is, that's, that reached the bottom. Because there eventually is going to be a situation where consideration is going to be given to removing that material from the bottom of the canals. Or maybe some other mitigation that possibly could happen to address that issue. So to come up with a statistically defensible estimate of that volume, it's really important how you take the samples, where you take the samples, and how many you take before you estimate how many gallons, if you will, of stuff that's in the bottom that was delivered as a result of the event. So that's another important part of the remediation plan. And again, you guys can take a look at that and provide comments. And that had to do with the remediation plan as well. Now, there were two other, two other questions that I've heard, and, you know, the important thing that, when I'm in a situation like this, no matter what situation I'm in, is my professional opinion is not based on opinion, it's based on data, it's based on information, understanding of the quantitative information that we have. It's too easy to make mistakes, again, by not following the rule that you're not going to make a conclusion until you have strict confidence in the data that's being collected. So that's really, really important. But it doesn't mean that there aren't things that are happening out there that we don't have any data for, but are of concern. And there were a couple of things that I had heard over the last week or two. One of them was an observation, there was a blackening of seawalls in the canal system, I think primarily in the Pompano system below G-57. And again, I'm not sure, you know, if that was out, was that a condition that occurred prior to the event? I have no idea. But I do know that one of the things that can affect blackening of the seawalls is the result of production of hydrogen sulfide in the bottom. So when there's little dissolved oxygen in the bottom, hydrogen sulfide gets produced. And that can cause blackening, when that water comes in contact with things like concrete, seawalls. The reason why you know you have hydrogen sulfide, it smells like rotten eggs. So if you did smell rotten eggs during the event, that's due to the production of hydrogen sulfide. The other thing was with respect to aerosol production, it was a question as to whether or not aerosols produced by the aerators might be a mechanism by which some of these contaminants may reach humans. And, you know, I've got to say, I saw like four or five of these aerators one day, a couple of weeks ago, in C-1. And what I saw, at least, at that site, at those sites, was a bubbling at the surface. These aerators aren't like these banned kind of fountain things that you see in Pompano Ponds and things like that, which, you know, actually wastewater operators do that kind of thing to get rid of ammonia in the water that they discharge. So it is a great way of getting rid of things. But the aerators that were used here, and again, I didn't see all 173, but the, you know, the ones that I saw, I don't think it was very likely that an aerosol production would be significant enough perhaps be a problem. So that's it. My presentation for today, and we're here to answer whatever questions we can answer.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Appreciate the presentation. Once again, I'd just like to mention that we do need to have anyone who wants to ask any questions come to this podium and speak into the microphone. I also would like to recognize, we do have our Vice Mayor Barry Moss with us now. Also, we had City Commissioner Beverly Perkins, she came in. She had another point she had to go to. And in the back, we actually have our own State Representative Chip Lamarcus. He is here, and he has been a tremendous help in this entire process. He's been our liaison with the Governor's Office and has really done a great job with he and his staff up in Tallahassee. So at this time, any questions, let's go ahead and have people please come up to the microphone, and we'll do our best to get those answered for you.
Thanks for stopping by. I'm Paul Luby, I'm in the Garden Isles. A couple of questions real quick. Thanks to Google, I was just curious, the acceptable limit of the enterococci is 35 colonies per 100 milliliters. It's according to the State of Florida Department of Health. When it gets up to 70, they consider it to be poor water quality. So as I was going through this, when I'm seeing spot locations of over 2,400, is that, it's not tracking, are we still testing for the fecal form at that point?
Yes, we are.
And the fecal form is not tracking on, the fecal form is showing low, but the enterococci?
The fecal form are showing improvement over time.
But the-
The exception of that one station that receives the discharge from C-14. But all the other sites are, and again, this is one of the problems, you've got two different numbers, same, you know, doing two different biological indicators.
Right.
They're giving us different stories. So, you know, we still, that sampling is continuing, and as you saw, the first two weeks went from something very high to something very low. We need more data before we draw any major conclusions.
So I guess, I guess one of my questions is the sediment that is on the bottom, which is still unknown exactly what that is composed of. Has that is stirred up by boats or people installing docks or anything that's going to stir that up? Is there going to be sediment in there that has not, is going to contain some of these bacteria that have not broken down yet?
I can't speak to that. I'm not sure. That's part of the mitigation that's going to go on, and that there is, the remediation plan, plan is the beginning of addressing that.
Okay.
Is it an important thing to do? Darn right.
Okay. Do we, do we have a, I was reading through both Aptims and your notes on that. Do we have an estimated timetable on the remediation as far as the sediment goes?
I don't have.
The reason I'm asking is, as time goes on, as we get into the summer, we're going to find out pretty quickly if we're going to have an algae bloom or not, and then it's going to be too late.
Yes, I agree.
If I could interrupt, perhaps we could actually have the folks from Aptim come forward. Jason, you're here, can you address any questions in that regard, as far as timelines? Hate to put you on the spot, but that's why you're here. Please introduce yourself.
Jason Whitman, Aptim Environmental, residence in Coral Springs. The Broward County has requested an update on the status of the sediment quarreling and everything in the remediation plan that is due March 5th. We're preparing a preliminary update right now that can go out before that date. That should be coming out the next day or so. It's in draft final review. So that's the timelines we have right now. We've adhered to the timelines associated with the original proposed sediment sampling. We actually expanded additional, more samples as we went, and as we go, we change and modify it. So we're basically on track with where we are, but we've continued, and there'll probably be some continuation as well, depending on the recommendations we make.
Okay. What would the timeline then be for the remediation plan? I guess what I'm getting at is, are we going to be able to do necessary remediation before we get into the hot summer months where the water temperature is going to come up and we're going to see potentially problems again with the canals that we've, were hopefully passed at this point? But if we're going to get an algae bloom from whatever nutrients are remaining attached to structures, walls, and floor bottom?
I think the nutrient levels are going to be best evaluated by Dr. Janicki's data as he collects more samples and nutrient-specific. The sediment as a presence or no presence of mass is where it's at. It was focused to start at the area where the, you know, spill occurred, and then work progressively with a large, like a net with large holes in it. And as we find or don't find, we shrink that net to finer holes. So that's really just an idea of identifying where it is. Once you've fully identified where it is laterally, its thickness determines the means and methods. So it is a progressive step without a clear timeline for solution, unfortunately.
Okay. I'm curious, I'm over on Southeast Eighth Avenue, so I'm actually kind of far down relatively to where the spill occurred, but anecdotally, in addition to the blackening of the seawall, I have algae on the walls and pilings that I have never seen before, where it was nutrient, it was gray, almost a cottony kind of deal resulting from the spill that was attached to barnacles and whatever growth was on there now. So that went from, you know, barnacles and growth to being gray, I assume waste, to now algae. So I am concerned that if we don't address this before the summer, it's going to be too late.
In this case, unfortunately, the coloration is still something in question that we're trying to determine. There's a lot of assumptions as to what its basis is, and it's not clear whether it's derived directly from a sediment issue and a load from the small percentage of sediment that exists in wastewater? Or is it a derived effect of a chemical reaction? You know, something with SO4 turning to H2S? Is it iron oxide? Is it, is it just sulfur? So there's a lot of different things that do need to be figured out to determine a comfort level, is this a problem, is it not, and what are the remedies to that? So that's, that is something, I think we have a team here, all with the same goal, figure that out.
I think that's great. I, the, with that said, obviously, if we're moving forward on the sediment remediation, that's going to take its natural course, its own timeline. But as far as switching from the fecal form bacteria count to the enterococci count for water quality, if we, if the State of Florida says 35 colonies per 100 milliliters and we're seeing numbers, well, and it dropped to 41, but was over 2,400, at what point is the city once again going to declare the water unsafe so that as the residents were aware we shouldn't be paddle boarding, kayaking, boating, fishing? I agree, you can't just take one number, but, I mean, how many, how many numbers of 2,400 before we're going to say we have either a continuing problem or we have a problem again?
One thing, when you, when you look at the state codes for both of those types of bacteria, they also recommend 10 samples over 30 days. So they look at an entire amount, and then they look at a threshold value of 10% of another number to figure it out over the period. So it's, it is something, exactly as Dr. Janicki said, you can't really rely on one sample, even when they close a beach, it hasn't hit the threshold. They just got one indicator, and they plan ahead that they make it advisory. So it's just something that's looked at that way.
No, I agree. And it's, I mean, there's, Groucho Marx said, "The statistics are like a bikini. What they show is important, what they hide is crucial." With that said, these numbers don't, you know, I'd like to see some sort of overlay with where the aerators were, with the numbers dropping. When the aerators were pulled out, then the numbers start to come back up. Where the testing, where the testing samples done, where the aerators were. I mean, there's obviously a whole bunch of variables in here. That's your guys' job, and I appreciate you guys doing it. I'm just wondering at what point, if we have determined that we have a issue again, or the issue is returning for whatever reason, we're basically going to make people aware of it. We-
Thanks. We still have, we, it's, I think his question is, what happens if the, if the numbers go back up? What, are, and we're saying, one sample doesn't give us a trend, but if one sample goes up or two samples go up, is that, is that a concern for our residents?
It is a concern, but it's not what the state uses to determine compliance with water quality standards. As Jason said, there's a minimum number of samples that you need to collect. You make sure you have them collected in each of the four seasons. And they look for an extent, more than, if you have more than 10% of the samples collected in excess of that standard, then you have an impairment. If the water body is deemed impaired, as C-14 is, was deemed impaired by DEP for fecal coliform, if it is, if there's, if these concentrations continue to increase to the point where we're having those, that exceedance of 10% of the samples, then what's going to happen is DEP and its normal impairment assessment of water bodies throughout the state will deem any of these water bodies, they refer to them as WIBIDS, W-B-I-D, water body IDs. If any of them is, are in exceedance of those standards, it requires the stakeholders responsible for that inf, for that- for that incident or that, or that problem to address it in the form of a total maximum daily load. That's an EPA acronym, TMDL. Basically, it refers, it kind of refers to a diet, if you will, of nutrients for a water body. TMDL tells you what's the maximum amount of nutrient supply going into a water body before you see an impairment of that water body. So they come up with a number and they, and then that number becomes now the target for the basin management action plan that I talked about before. So that if, if, and this is something we're going to have to look at over time, if, if the data lean toward a situation where DEP is going to deem any of these water bodies impaired, you're going to have to go through that process of the TMDL and the BMAP, which are not easy processes to go through.
One thing, since Dr. Janicki mentioned the C14 canal, we talked about that data range, just want to bring it to your attention that the structure that's west of the G57 structure, it's called G65, that structure was opened on February 11th. So it had something around 50, CFAS go through it. It's actually between then and now about 20 times the spill volume has moved out from the C11. So we've had a humongous influx of natural canal system water that has, you know, it's distressed anyway. Comes from everywhere where I live out west and loads in all the canals, off the roads and things like that. So that has flowed through. So some of the levels that we see may be the influx of everything that's been held back since the discharge now finally coming through the system. But that's a normal movement that happens through that system. We always bring the west canal water and it discharges east. So, no, but it went up and it went down and it changes. So.
If we, if we could go ahead, is any comments, questions? Let's go ahead and continue on. I really appreciate the, the technical term "humongous" there also. I just, I just, just a little laudity. Any questions? Yes, please, please, sir, come on up. Absolutely, yeah. This is what this is all about, questions and answers and trying to get, get situated. Name an address or name an area, please.
Ken Orm, Garden Isles. Dr. Janicki, do you keep track of when that G57 is open or closed?
Yes, it's in, it's in the South Florida Water Management District database.
Because on your PowerPoint, you pointed out when the enterococci was high and then all of a sudden it was down to nothing. That's the time that that gate, G57, has been open solid since that date. We have a boat that we have to go under a bridge. I have to monitor that for the last five years because sometimes they let water out at high tide and it stays high tide all day long. And, you know, that's just been open wide open. You know, let, I mean, are we just diluting what is there and we're just pushing it further down the canal? I mean, it makes 100% sense that your numbers, you said you were scratching your head and you couldn't understand why they went from 2000 to 14. Of course, if we got the floodgates open, we're going to thin that out. I'm also wondering that, or dragging our feet, aren't taking the bottom samples, are we just pushing everything there all the way down the Pompano Canal? Where when you're going to take your samples, you're going to say, oh, well, this is just a, you know, a little teeny speck of such and such, we're all clear. I, I'm just, also, South Florida Water Management is not here?
Is anyone here from South Florida Water Management District? No, we have no one here from...
I'm just curious, who tells them what to do?
It's, it's a function, they're, the way they operate that structure is to reduce the probability of flooding.
Well, no, but my question is, generally speaking, like I said, I came across this website from a fishing magazine because people fish around dams. They said, well, you can go online, you can see when they're open or closed, it's good for fishing. Now, this G57, it's generally, they open it once or twice a day. I mean, for years. And they usually possibly move it up an hour each day. They'll open it for a couple hours, they'll close it. I'm just saying, why is it open? Who is telling them to leave this open for, since February 11th? It's not closed.
They, they operate that under, as far as I understand, because most situations like this around the state are dealt with by the Army Corps of Engineers as well. So there, there are specific protocols for how they open and close. The information I showed was the amount of water that they said went through that gate on a 24 hour, over a 24-hour basis. And, you know, there may be, and, and I, you know, I'm not saying it's not true, that there may be the open for a day, on one day, they may be open for an hour or two. And perhaps the measurement system that they have doesn't give you a very good estimate of how much water actually passed.
Well, I'm not so concerned with that. What I'm getting at is, when, when the spill happened, I was calling South Florida Water Management and I said, "You need to close the gate. Everything's going down the canal." And they let it keep going. I understand you didn't want to flood Avondale, so that really wasn't an option. But then at a certain point, somebody told them to close it. And it was closed. So my question is, maybe you're not the person to answer, the question is, who tells them when to open it and when to close it?
We've got Scott Case, he's a contractor with the FDOT. He's probably going to address this a little bit, because yeah, I've got a little better understanding.
Thanks, Rick. My name is Scott Case, I'm with HNTB, I'm the lead CI for the I-95 Phase 382 project, overseeing the construction on 95. When the spill happened, I was in direct contact with South Florida Water Management through the whole process. During the spill, before the pipe was repaired, South Florida Water Management did try and close the gate to a level that they could to reduce the amount of flow that was going through the area into the Pompano Canal. They could not close it completely because of the amount of water, the raw water that was coming into the canal, remembering that you've got the C1 canal that comes down, drains into what's called the G16, which C14 comes into, and then that drains into the Pompano Canal through the G57 structure. So all that area is controlled by that gate at G57 as far as the amount of water that is allowed to pass through. And so South Florida Water Management is controlling that because if they were to close it and all that spill and the weight of water that was coming through there, it would have been flooding residents along the C1 canal, along the G16, all in those areas if the gate was closed. So they had to keep it somewhat open to regulate the flow. So where, where it was open, at a certain point, they lowered it to, so that...
My question is, who is telling what to do now?
Let me finish answering the question, because you said, you know, the issue about it being open at the time of a certain date or closed at the time of a certain date. That time of closing is when the repair was made and the water stopped flowing into the canals. The raw sewage was stopped flowing, and that's when the gate was completely closed, to hold back everything.
Also, I'm just curious, I, by looking at that, I don't know, I think they call it a spillway. I think if the water level goes too high, it just goes over the top. I don't think, everybody's telling about how they're opening it, opening up and letting it through.
Mm-hmm.
I really honestly think that it would go over the top.
It does.
If it got too high. So that's my point, is who is in charge of this, like right now? When's it going to close?
So all, all of that for South Florida Water Management is closed and regulated by the flood planes in the area. They control the flood levels and the drainage levels through the entire system. And when it reaches a certain point, they have to open the gate and let the water flow.
We also have a representative for Broward County here, would like to chime in just a little bit.
So I just, Leonard Valpando, Broward County, Coconut Creek. I just wanted to explain a little bit more about the G57, the one that you're referring to about being open and closed. It's, it's what's called a salinity control structure. So it's a little different than a typical flood control structure, right? And its goal is, because tide comes in and out every day, right? So when tide comes in, it raises by a foot. When it goes down, it lowers by a foot. And, you know, as Dr. Janicki was mentioning earlier, it's freshwater upstream of the G57 and it's saltwater downstream of the G57. And so its purpose is to stay shut when tide is coming in so that it doesn't create saltwater upstream of the G57. So that part is remaining as freshwater. And then it opens up when the elevation in the upstream of G57 is high enough that it won't allow water from tide to go past the G57. So what happens is, is they set what's called like a control elevation and they say, all right, when the water behind this gate is low, then the gate has to be shut so that the saltwater can't get behind the gate. When the water behind the gate is high, then the gate stays open to let that water out so those people don't flood. So if you look at those, what you can often do when you look at that gate is you can look at the upstream elevation and the downstream elevation, right? And the reason why the gate's been open is because the upstream elevation, if you look at it, the head water, right, has been higher than the downstream elevation, the tail water. And since that's the case, they have to leave it open. And they'll leave it open until all of the upstream elevation water is low enough so that they can shut the gate when tide comes in. So you might see on some occasions, the gate will be shut for a long time because the upstream elevations are low and tide is coming in and they don't want that water past. And then you might see the gate open for weeks at a time because there's enough water in the upstream areas feeding it that it always stays high enough that the gate just stays open. So that, so just so you know, like who's telling them what to do? They have like a control room and it's got a number and they say, okay, that number's been achieved, they can push a button and, and open and close the gate. And to the, to what the FDOT guy was saying, to his point, right after the spill, they did change their normal operation because there was a concern that if they opened the gate, that they would be causing or contributing to downstream discharge and impairment. So they did for a period of time, keep the gate shut, which is why you saw it shut because, and even though there were issues, you know, upstream, they couldn't do the normal thing. And then when you saw the gate reopened, it just went back to its normal operation and it's currently operating under its normal operation. And that's my understanding of what's happening with it right now. So as far as who's telling them what to do, it's just they're following the normal protocols.
Okay, let me tell you a couple of things. If you go over to that spillway right now, our saltwater level will never breach and go to freshwater. It's literally like this table right here. It's, okay, so that's a non-issue. They control, if you follow that canal, it goes all the way to Lake Okeechobee. They control every, they control the level from Lake Okeechobee. I mean, they're dumping water from Lake Okeechobee, comes all the way down our canal. You can follow it back. I mean, I have a list of all the different locks that go all the way back up. So the more they open it, they're feeding it. It's not like what you're saying that, oh, we have to let it go. It hasn't rained that much. Like I said, I've lived here for 20 years, I've never seen that open for two weeks unless they'll open it solid before a hurricane, a few days before that because they're afraid they're lowering the level of the lake. So what you're telling me does not make any sense at all, and you're not answering my question.
So if you go, if you go upstream of this particular, so that if you look at the map, I don't know if he's got one, but if you see the, the G57 is one leg, right, of the northern, and then you've got the C14 coming around this way and then they meet out east, right? You've got those two...
I'm just saying, I could tell you all the numbers.
No, I hear you, but...
Goes to 65, then it goes to 38, then it keeps like a...
So the point is, is you've got, you've got two ways to go through, right? So normally, the C14 goes south and around and comes around the bottom. And the C1 is the primary feeder there to the G57. And if you look at, I don't know if you're familiar with the Old Pompano Canal, which is that little canal that runs south of Atlantic between here at City Hall and down there by the racetrack? That little section of Old Pompano Canal for years was just a deadened canal, it wasn't connected to anything. And there's a structure down there at Powerline and Atlantic that would stop the water from coming from the northern part and around and make it go south and around. And it was because of a previous TMDL, which was put out by the federal government and by the state, that, that gate actually first came into operation. So just so you know, this part of the canal doesn't typically receive the stuff from, you know, the west and Lake Okeechobee unless that little secondary gate is open because it really goes around the south and around. So like I said, it is a salinity structure. I have for you here and I'll give it to you, the printouts from the structure and what the elevations were and how it was operated. And I'd be happy to, after the meeting, if you want to talk about it, and we could talk to the Water Management District, I have the, the whole database, I can show you how to read all the different elevations.
I know how to read it.
Okay, so I'd be happy to discuss it with you after, and like I said, if you want, you can have this, but that is, that is how it's operating.
Okay, so that all makes sense.
Thank you.
All makes sense. Let me add one more thing.
Sure.
Okay, so all this water that's coming from the west, okay? It has the option to go behind Palm Air and come out by Dixie over by, what's it called? Pinecrest? There's a lock over there. That's number, I think it's 37A. Now, 37A has been shut for the last week. So if we have to divert so much water from the west, why can't it be diverted that way? Why is it all flushing? I mean, I'm basically, what I'm telling you is, we're just flushing everything out to make it all look good. I mean, doesn't that make sense? It's like, the more water you dump on it, the more it's going to be diluted. And you're, nobody can tell me who's, I don't think South Florida Water Management is over there going, okay, let's just run everything down Pompano Canal. I don't think I have 37A open.
Valid question.
So I have to say, maybe next time we can have someone...
Absolutely, but I encourage you, the gentleman, he, he can, he's willing to work with you immediately after this meeting and contact South Florida Water Management District, get those kind of questions answered. And I, I'm sorry, we don't have them here also. I think they were probably, they were probably invited, but it's, we just don't have that answer today. So is there anything else that we can, we can address as far as the water quality and remediation plans, any of that?
Are, is Pompano being reimbursed by FDOT for Mr. Janicki?
Yes, it is. Yeah, we, we, all the expenses, that'll be all worked out, yes.
All right, thank you for your time.
Absolutely, thank you. I appreciate you being here today. Go ahead. Yeah, this is what this meeting is about, is to try and answer questions.
Melanie Webster. So Dr. Janicki, you brought up a huge faux pas on my, my part. I went ahead and tested for E. coli. You've been very informative and now I realize that we should, even though you went ahead and tested for the E. coli as well on those certain spots after the 11th, on the 11th, on the 7th, I went ahead, I live in Garden Isles, which is on the canal, and just your, your take on this. And I understand that I did not do 30 tests or 10 tests in 30 days, I only did one test, but the, the E. coli was 8,860. So it was done by PACE Analytical, which is a highly recommended place. And now I'm going to go ahead and test again for the Enterocaki or however you say it, and I'll try to do more testing, but that's just behind my canal. And I am east of the G57. And I know you're not discussing core samples. We've lived there for almost 20 years and the other gentleman mentioned the black and yeah, maybe it was caused by whatever, but it's never been there before. So all these levels you're saying, okay, that's great, you've got your green dots, green means go, yay, team. It is not the same as before sewage came down, raw sewage came down our canals. So I know you're doing a great job, I know that, I just don't want the ball to be dropped because of the green dots. I want to make sure that the long-term is secured. My fear is that, okay, great, look at all this, yay, let's go. You know, I see people in our canals paddle boarding and all this sort of thing, and you even said last night you'd never swim in it. I asked a question. I've got a mango tree, everybody loves my mangoes, is it going to affect the mango tree and would you eat it? And you had mentioned, yes, I'd eat the mangoes, but I wouldn't swim in the water. So I just, I want to make sure that if somebody falls in, it's not going to pose a problem and I, and I'd really like continued testing on the east of the 57. I'm going to hand this to you.
You're doing testing. Are you having a professional come and collect samples?
Uh, no.
Okay, yeah, here's what I would suggest, one of the things that...
Uh, no, they, they told me how to do it and I had to keep it on ice and I brought it to them, you know, within a couple hours and, and that sort of thing. It was labeled, don't touch it, use another container and that sort of thing.
It certainly does call into question, you know, the validity of the information. Just want to let you know that.
Yeah, I get that.
It's a high number, but it's, it's only one number. It's a high number, but it's, it's only one number. And the reality of it is, as I said, these numbers you're going to see go up and down in time, and from space to space. That's why it's, it's a requirement to determine whether or not you're in compliance with the water quality standard, is you take that into account, okay? That you don't have an immediate response to a really high value or a really low value, whichever one is good or bad.
Got it.
That you, you really, and, and so I say, I, you know, I applaud you for what you did, but we need to be careful how, how we use that information. So that was one thing. You said a number of things. You're talking about that value, what-
Core sampling, just wanted to make sure nothing's forgotten.
The core, and, and I did talk about core sampling.
You said, we're not going to do cores-
No.
You're not going to answer questions about, okay.
No, I don't have any data to present on core sampling.
Got it.
I, I have a, a, if you take time to look at the comments I had on remediation plans with respect to the core sampling, there's some pretty significant recommendations there. Okay, so you could take a look at that, yeah. We don't, I don't have any data. Jason and I are going to be exchanging data. I have data that he doesn't have, and vice versa, and we're going to be exchanging information, so everybody has what's out there. Is, are the sediments a problem? It's definitely important to look at. Absolutely.
East of the G-57?
Throughout, throughout the system.
Okay, great.
Because we, here's the thing, that you've got to understand, is that there's, this spill was nasty. It was big, okay? In, in, in scientific terms, I wasn't humongous, but it was big.
I like humongous.
Okay? But, I mean, the point, the point of it is, is that, you know, you've got to, you know, you've got to put, put all that into perspective, some way, shape, or form, before you go too far and draw. You know, the worst thing to do is, I mean, you can, you can make two mistakes. You can miss the bad stuff, okay? And in which case you're going to, in terms of, we're talking about the sediments. In which case you may significantly underestimate the amount of stuff that's settled out. Okay, that's, that's really important. The, the other mistake that you can make is you can overestimate it. Now you're, you know, you're all taxpayers, and, and the cost of dredging and removing that, that material is very expensive. So you want to get as tight a number as you possibly can, with some high degree of statistical significance, in terms of understanding how much of that material is out there. And that's what the next thing to do is. The other thing to consider is that there's not only bacteria associated with that material, but there are other things like nutrients that need to be taken into account.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much.
I, that's one of the things I thought about. There are no industrial inputs to, to the system at, above that point. I was really worried about that, too.
And that, the question on, that just was posed was, was toxic metals also, that's what Mr. Janicki was, was responding to. Any, any questions, ma'am? Questions, concerns you'd like to have addressed? No?
I just wanted to-
Can you come to the microphone, please? Thank you. Yeah, we just need to have it on the record. This is all being recorded and, and live televised also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Orfino, Garden Isles.
Great, thank you.
I felt that this was really a great thing, that we had this meeting today. But I think there was a lot of people in Garden Isles that had some technical questions that they wanted answered, and it was pretty impossible to be here at 2:00 in the afternoon, because a lot of people go to work, and it was kind of short notice. I'd like to know when they're going to have another meeting at an appropriate time when people are not at work and can come, like, in the evening like we did before.
Okay. This is a valid question. We, I'm sure we will have a follow-up meeting, I'm not sure when that's going to be scheduled, but our city manager will be handling that, and we'll take into consideration the timing of the meeting also. Thank you, thank you very much. Good, good point. Yes, sir, go ahead. At this kind of meeting, we take seconds, thirds, you name it, that's, that's it.
Just to follow up on his question on the toxic metals, there was another concern of mine is, while there may technically be nobody online that's supposed to be dumping stuff down those drains, people do, and they violate the law, they dump pathogens, carcinogens, heavy metals, toxic metals, oils, petroleum products, which just to me indicates that much higher a need to be testing the water for those products. Yeah, in theory, the only thing that came down there was human waste, but we all know better than that. I don't know exactly how far into Fort Lauderdale that system goes, but to say that over the nine, or the seven days that the 9 million gallons a day flowed, nothing came out of there other than what somebody consumed previously, I don't think is a realistic assessment. And we should be testing for some of these other things in the water, on the assumption that people did things they weren't supposed to do.
And, and we plan to. I mean, we haven't, we're waiting to-
We're seven weeks into it.
Well, I, I've only been working on it for about two weeks, so-
Okay, well-
And that's not an excuse. I'm trying to do my, my best in helping you out with this situation.
And I appreciate that.
One, one thing to recognize is, most of the things you talked about are not in the water column per se, they're typically in some kind of particular form, and you'll see them in the bottom. So when you talk about things like metals, some organics, those kind of things, they're typically not in the water column, they are in the sediments. And there are illicit discharges that you need to take into account. A reason I said there are no permitted industrial inputs above there was, that was the first thing that I asked about that situation. It doesn't mean you don't continue to collect the information, because a lot of that stuff that you talked about are coming off the watershed, and not within the wastewater system itself. So when it's talked about the importance of understanding the rainfall and the runoff and that kind of things, those things also need to be taken into consideration.
Yeah, I agree, and there's, there's things that we have to live with because of where it is, everything that's coming down from Lake Okeechobee downstream, everywhere from cattle waste to fertilizer to guys changing oil and dumping it into the canal upstream. I understand all that. However, this, with 52 million gallons in a very short period of time in a tightly contained area, we now have the sediment, we know we have the sediment. I'm on the canals for the boating. I don't know if you're familiar or not, they'll tell you at low tide, when you put that boat in gear, it's going to kick up sediment, and you can see it discolor the water. So now, if the sediment is in fact holding potentially hazardous, you know, materials, that's the main reason I'm trying to get as, a hand on this as quickly as possible, is what exactly is on the bottom now? You know, when I drop my boat in and put it in gear and it kicks it up, am I throwing toxic metals back up into the water column? Anything in there? It's, I'm not an expert, that's why you're here.
And, and the thing you bring up, you know, I mentioned that dredging can be very expensive. What makes dredging very expensive oftentimes is the nature of the sediment, that you're actually dredging up. If it is contaminated, you know, where it gets deposited is going to cost you a heck of lot more money than if it's a clean sediment.
Shouldn't cost us anything.
I'm, I'm sorry, but before you would ever get a permit to do any kind of dredging, you would have to do all of those analyses, the cumulutria tests, that the Army Corps of Engineers and the state require you to do. So before any of that material might come out of these canals, it, it'll be tested for those things. My suspicion is, we're going to know something about it beforehand.
That'd be great, but the, my instinct is telling me that the more difficult it would be to get a permit because of the hazardous nature, that much more we need to dredge these canals. If there's nothing, if there's nothing in there that's going to create any problems, then we don't need to dredge. The more like, the more necessary it is to dredge, if it's going to be less likely to get a permit and be more expensive, now we're kind of in a, in a standoff here, so that's, that's my concern. We're, we're, we are, you know, the water quality, the, the Enterococci kind of concerns me, because that's a new one we haven't seen, and the numbers are still, even at the lowest, they're still considered poor by the state of Florida. And that actually kind of, excuse me, came off Palm Beach's website. But again, a concern, my concern is the sediment. And we are coming back into boating season pretty quickly. And if you've ever seen a busy Saturday, normally that water is somewhat discolored just from the silt that's on the bottom, if we start kicking up all the sediment and throwing it back into the water column.
Are the sediments that are in your part of the system mostly sand or silt?
Uh, mostly silt.
See, that's, you know, I've heard several different situations, different, it's because we talk about, everything's site-specific, home, local, occasion, location. So, you know, that, that's interesting, and that's important, that's why we talked about when doing the sampling, because of the variability, not only in the material that was deposited, but just in the natural variability of the sediments, you need to take that into account.
Correct, and I don't, I don't know if anybody's ever core sampled the silt prior to January 4th. I mean, there might be stuff in there we didn't know we'd been living with.
Right.
But what we do know is on January 4th, an event happened, which damaged our water system, our canals, our city, our tax base. If this is not resolved in a satisfactory manner, so it's, I understand it's taking its own timeline, but that's what's driving us as the residents of the area, is, is the water safe? Is it going to be safe in the future? Am I going to have problems with algae blooms? You know, any sort of stuff, because this was something that was out of our control and we have to live with it, so.
That's why I'm here.
I appreciate it. I appreciate you being here, so we just, we all want answers. Cool, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, yes. The quicker we can get answers, the better. Any other questions, comments? If not, I'd like to call up our city manager, just to recognize a few people who are here. Mr. Harrison.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Greg Harrison, city manager here in Pompano Beach. I'd like to thank all of you for being here today. We have a mix of residents and folks from agencies connected with the project. We actually have one person here all the way from Tallahassee with the Department of Health. Thank you, sir, for being here. We have other folks from the Department of Health from Broward County, guys here from Broward EDP. We have FDOT here in force with their contractors and subcontractors, Prince and SASE. And we have our attorney, attorneys, Lauren Bryan back there in the back, who are working closely with Mr. Janicki and, and city staff. So at this time, Representative Lamarcus, thank you especially for being here, for all of your help in setting up, working with everyone with the state. You or anybody else with the agencies or the contractors, is there anything you want to add to put on the record today? All right. Very good. Thank you for being here.
All right, that's going to end our meeting. Thank you all very much for being here and participating, and we will get more information out as quickly as we get it. Thank you.